Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I don't have a gavel, I can't gavel, gavel-less in this session here. But this is a study session of the council. There's no public comment, this is an open, public meeting, but there is no public comment planned. We will have some presenters tonight. And the goal of this, of this study session, there's three bills that are actually before the council right now, that's from the full council, they're sponsored by Councilor Harris. These are bills that provide, you know, changes to the charter and recommendations from the Charter Review Task Force. And probably, I'd say that the most important part of this meeting and future meetings regarding this would be for us to just to give clarity on what's in this bill and what the changes are specifically to P-1512. So before us is the committee substitute, there's a redlined version, there's a cleaned up version, I recommend the cleaned up version. It's a little bit easier to understand. If you're like myself and Councilor Jones and others, you've read through this bill several times and still don't understand it. So that is, that is the purpose of this meeting, is that we would get very good clarity on the changes to the charter regarding the Open and Ethical Election Code and public financing. So the focus of this will be on, again, will be on P-1512. And several presentations, again, with the goal of really helping us understand this so that, again, when this bill comes back before for discussion for the full council that we'll have, and probably even with some recommendations to defer, again, so that we can continue to have this discussion even at the full council. So we'll try to get as far as we can here today. I would like to invite, you know, Ms. Ferguson and Lindsey, if you all would like to join us at the table here. Ms. Rantoon, Mr. White, you all are welcome to come and join us at the table if you'd like to. And we'll begin discussion. Bob White, Heather Ferguson, the Charter Review Task Force, as well as Doug Rantoon, who served on the Charter Review Task Force. And Heather Ferguson also with Common Cause, I believe Heather, you have the, you'll be presenting first, speaking with us first?
Yes, Mr. Ferguson, thank you so much, and welcome, thank you guys all for being here. I'm Heather Ferguson, Legislative Director for Common Cause. And we have been working on this issue for quite some time, specifically trying to address some of the things that have come up with the public financing program here in Albuquerque. And so I was going to start you initially. Just a very super brief background on this. The charter amendment to create a public financing program here in Albuquerque was approved by 69 percent of the voters back in 2005. And that's when we set up the qualifying amounts of mayoral candidates putting together and city council candidates putting together five dollar contributions from 1 percent of the registered voters in order to qualify for public finance. Then we set up that there would be a block amount or an initial allowance essentially, given to each one of the candidates that qualified. For the mayor, it was 362,000, and then for the council candidates, it's one dollar per registered voter in their district. So we realized there's quite a variance across the different districts in their registered voter population. And then it is paid for by 0.1 percent of 1 percent of the approved general fund. That's some of the process we'll get into later. One of the issues that came up in 2011 is that there was a 10th Circuit case called the Arizona Pre-Enterprise Club. And that essentially was an issue that arose, that they wanted to discuss the constitutionality of whether or not what was called at the time matching funds or trigger funds were allowable, since money was now, since the Citizens United case went through, considered free speech. So if you have something where an action is taken by a privately financed candidate to raise the amount of money being spent in an election, and an automatic amount of money was being given to the publicly financed candidate as we had with our program here in Albuquerque, that was an infringement on free speech, that essentially you were taking it out of the hands of the voters and leaving it as the city government to just give money over to the publicly financed candidate. So that's what we initially came into this process needing to try to fix. So how this works is that what we set up was to do small dollar contributions, anywhere between five and $100, that will set a threshold, so that non-serious candidates don't qualify and viable candidates won't be shut out, but it will still have the consistent funding source that we set forth within the general budget. And one of the other things that it will do, when we set up these matching funds, is that I would have to, as a candidate, speak to all of you to garner all of those small contributions. And we realized that there would be no undue influence, which is one of the issues that public financing was created to address, or the appearance of undue influence of anyone who was a larger contributor to anyone's campaign. Okay, already heard this, and we really wanted to condense this for some time. Just really briefly, I want to touch on that the amount appropriated to the public financing fund serves as an absolute limit to the city's financial exposure. That's the way it has been, and that's the way it will be. So no one can say, "Oh, you guys owe me more money than what you have," and take this report because I can't have that. So what we have set up and what we'd like to do, and our recommendation coming through here would be the matching funds program, which would allow for individuals to get their initial stipend. And Lindsey will walk through some of the actual numbers of that in her presentation. But you would get your initial allowance, and then you would go out and put together up to a certain threshold, the number of five to $100 contributions, that would then be matched by the city at a four to one basis. And I know that there's been other discussions tossed about, about different amounts or different matching, but it would be capped, so that it would be only twice the amount of your initial stipend. So $40,000 is your initial stipend, $40,000 on top of that is all you can get in a total of $80,000. So I'm just using with numbers as an example. So this will empower the small donors to feel like they all have a voice, they all have an opportunity to speak with you, and it helps their perception that there hasn't been any large donors contributing to their campaigns. These are the few of the dates that we changed through the task force. Through some input that we had from Doug Rantoon and several of the lawyers on there, they wanted to take a look at extending some of the periods of time. So for the mayoral race, you would start collecting and recording nomination petition signatures beginning on February 16th and going to the deadline of April 28th. And then for collecting or recording those qualified contributions, those $5, $100 contributions would begin on March 3rd and end on April 28th. City council races, May 1st, June 28th for the petition signatures, and May 17th to June 28th for the qualified contributions. This is gonna be kind of bleary for me to try to go through all of these dates, I'll be happy to give this out to everybody because I think it clearly lines out the reporting dates. Many of these have not changed from what is already currently in the charter.
Excuse me, Heather, do you have an end out of this?
Yes, that's what I was just saying, I think we'd like to get one of those to everybody. Should we get? And now we'll be able to refer back to these after the event. So this is all, you know, if you were the candidate, this is what the application for public financing would include, and this is what it already has been including. Same process again for certification, so this is just again, just sort of walking through some of the process that is still in place. And this would be one of the ones that is starting to change. So within one business day of receiving a report of qualified contributions, the city clerk would disburse $4 for every $1 that you reported by the candidate. So you have already qualified for public financing, you have not been accepting any private donations above $100. And then you would turn in this report, and you could get a four to one match within a business day. The cap of the amount of matching payments that you can accrue is what was decided by the task force would be limited to twice the amount of the candidate's initial allowance. That way we don't artificially inflate any of these races, but in trying to look at the cost of these races right now and what they're probably gonna cost in a couple of years, without having to come back and change this every year, since unfortunately it's the charter.
Let me ask you something. And we'll do this later, but one thing to think about is maybe having a charter amendment that allows seven councils to adjust this. Because there's, there's, Lindsey has another presentation, it's probably about the same length, and I think it repeats some of the things that Heather's talking about, but it might also give some further clarification, and then why don't we, why don't we, Heather, if you'd like to finish, and then we'll have Lindsey go, and then if there's other, then we'll go into some discussion and questions, I think we have a good group of people here that could help us with some of the questions.
Sure, am I keeping it the right time?
You're fine, you're fine.
And I'll go ahead and ask staff to have Heather's presentation printed, so that counselors may have a copy of that as well.
Did I wrap up the end of it?
That was, that was the end of, that was it.
Oh, okay, fine. I took off some of the slide.
Heather, I think that was your last slide.
Yes, it was, I had to go, I had to go.
All right, counselors, thank you so much for coming today to kind of get a feel for these proposals before you. What I'll go ahead and do is I'll start with the first proposal. If you want to take the packet that was provided to you, that says the charter amendment proposal is recommended under 2013 Charter Review Task Force, so that you can kind of follow along as we go. So for clarity's sake, let's call this one Proposal 1. This is relating to public financing. So this relates to Article 16, which is the Open and Ethical Election Provision. So I'll go ahead and pass through here. So Heather talked a little bit about the intent of the bill. The bill, the charter rather actually states that, you know, we're trying to make these elections fair and viable for qualified candidates. So here's a little summary of what the task force did. So this is being recommended by the task force, who voted on a united vote to recommend this proposal to you. In addition to technical cleanup definitions, this proposal removes provisions that have been unconstitutional, as Heather relayed to you. And so this kind of takes away the matching of matching fund systems, and moves thereof a qualified contribution system, where I will go into further detail about that system. So let's break it down as if you were running for council, right? So you say you have 40,000 registered voters in your district. Starting May 17th and ending on June 28th, you have six weeks. You must collect qualified contributions. What your qualified contributions are anywhere from $5 to $100 from a single donor. So when you raise that, you must raise at least 1 percent of the registered voters in your district. So that number, that magic number you'd be aiming for would be 400. As soon as you receive that 400 and turn in that form and you file with the city clerk, you would then receive your initial distribution, which is equal to $1 for every registered voter. Yes, that's a good question.
Tell me the dates again, was that May 17th?
Yes, May 17th, ending on June 28th. And if you want to see that real fast.
That's for collection of the qualifying contributions and the petition signatures?
Petition signatures don't change. They actually start a little bit earlier. So the only thing that changes is in yellow. So the timeframe for you to collect and turn in your forms for the public financing, that now would go from for council from four weeks to six weeks. So your start date would change from what it initially was, and your end date would change. And now your end date coincides with the same day that you have to turn in your signatures for your petition signatures.
Do you get extra time?
Yeah, you get two extra weeks. So qualified contributions are not capped. You can continue to raise these qualified contributions in increments of anywhere from $5 to $100. So qualified contributions would be matched from four, a four to one match, so you'd get $4 for every $1 that you actually raise.
To what limit?
They would be limited to two times your initial allowance. So if you skip over to that next slide, this slide actually is a little bit easier to read. So, for example, the minimum number that you would have to earn to meet those 400, 1 percent of your registered voters, so you would need to qualify for participation with at least $5 from 400 people. So that would take you to, your minimum would be $2,000. So as soon as you raise that $2,000, you qualify for the initial distribution.
Wait, and don't you have to turn in your signatures and have those signatures approved before you qualify?
Yes, that is pending.
So you don't just raise the money, you have to turn them in to the clerk after you certify? Then you get it.
Then you get, that unlocks your, yes, thank you for that point of view. It does unlock your initial distributions. Then from there, the max that you can get for an initial distribution is the total number of registered voters in your district. Then from there, you can continue to raise qualified contributions, but say you didn't. Say you just raised the bare minimum to be a participating candidate. So you would then, your matching funds would be in addition to your initial distribution. So, again, matched four to one, but keep in mind your total payments, this is where the cap comes in. Your total payments made to a participating candidate, combining both your initial distribution and your matching funds, cannot exceed two times the amount of your initial distribution. So you would be capped at two times this.
Who is your, you mean your city's maximum contribution?
Right, the city, and that candidate can't get any more from the city, the city is capped out.
So, I'm sorry, I keep interrupting, but this, I mean, to go back and do this.
It's gonna take a lot of this, we're gonna, if you, yeah, I think you should finish this, because we're gonna have a lot of these kind of questions, but I mean, if it would help, Councilor Jones, I mean, you're welcome to.
Thank you, Mr. President, and then I'll be quiet, because this is the part where I couldn't get it right, I couldn't get it straight. So, let's just do a scenario. A candidate raises $2,000, has the right amount of signatures, they are certified as qualified. They can now go back and raise as much as they can raise?
Yep, as long as they are qualified contributions of $5 to $100.
As much as they can raise?
As much as they can raise.
And the city will have to match that four to one at what amount?
The city won't have to match all of those qualified contributions. As soon as you hit this cap, so as soon as you reach, like, for example, your cap for this scenario would be $10,000. So anything above that would not be matched.
Okay, so here's the next question. Can they continue to raise money infinitum? So we are in fact giving, with this scenario, we are giving city money to run a campaign, and yet we are letting those candidates go back out and raise as much money as they can possibly raise against a privately funded candidate. It's just not matched anymore, but we don't limit how much they can raise.
That's correct. In total, but they still have to be less than $100.
Well, sure, but they're still out campaigning. I mean, there are very few contributions that are that much over $100 anyway. So, so what you're doing is the city is giving up to $20,000, right?
Well, this is not what Lindsey's doing or what we're doing.
Okay, but I'm just trying to get, this is the part I couldn't understand. Is this, Mr. White, is this what we're?
My understanding, and Mr. White, if you could clarify, that the total matching funds would be, in this scenario, $80,000. And from the initial five dollar qualifications of 400 people, minimums of 2,000. And then if up to $10,000 is raised initially, from five to $100, there's a max, a cap of $80,000. But it is my understanding that you can continue, after the qualifying period ends, a candidate can continue to raise up to $100, you know, per person, and, you know, raise a couple of thousand dollars if they wanted to, in that kind of.
Right, I think, I think you've explained what the, what is in the bill right now.
I'm sorry, and then I'll shut.
There are a lot of things, these details, that all this, I mean, obviously this is a proposed bill, I mean, we're gonna disagree and agree on some of these things, I just want to make sure we get a big clarification on it. Go ahead, Councilor Jones.
So does that mean that they can also, is their cap at $100 all the way through?
All the way through.
And what happens if they exceed that $100?
If they exceed that $100, they would violate the provisions of the ordinance, they would be, the clerk would then disqualify them as a qualified or a participating candidate, and they would have to return all the money that they received from the city.
And what if, I'm sorry, what if that final report with the dollar contributions is in after the election, because this happens, and now they have all of these that are, all they need is two or three, they're over $100 each, does that mean we disinfect them?
So, and that, those provisions, those provisions are in the current, and there are some provisions for that in the current charter, and they are specified in this, in this bill also, but, I was, you want to clarify?
Yeah, just, the violation would be, would be treated as a violation of this to be enforced by the Board of Ethics, so they wouldn't be removed from office. But if, if, let's say, if they don't take a contribution over $100, there's no problem.
Exactly.
Right. It's, the problem in your scenario, as I'm hearing it, is if they do take a contribution over $100, what the proposal has in it is that would be, is one of the criteria that could, would be up to the clerk to do this, could disqualify them from being a participating candidate.
What if they're already elected? What if it doesn't show up until after, until the last report after the election is made final, they're, they're?
They would be a winner, the violation of the Open and Ethical Election Code would then go to the Board of Ethics for determination on what the sanction should be.
So we could fine them $500 and they'd still be the elected official?
If I may, it's also still, it's in there right now also, that it would be possibly charged with a 12 percent interest rate on all of that money, that would have to be paid back as well.
But they'd still be elected?
So, Ms. Rantoon, you want to clarify?
If it's clarifiable. Mr. White, did you want to expand beyond this concept in order to respond to some of the Councilor Joneses and others' concerns?
Well, I could go through what, I think the question is, what happens if somebody takes a contribution more than $100?
Yeah, I think the current regimens provides for violations to be alleged and then adjudicated by the Board of Ethics. I think Councilor Jones is bringing up the unworkability and the unreasonability of that because we are layering such an unusual system of conflicting interests that the solutions are more complicated than the ideas initially.
I think that if the council wanted to entertain looking at enforcing the election code, the Code of Ethics, and the current Open and Ethical Election ordinances, this is all the same as what you've got now. You certainly could, you could certainly look at a remedy that could disqualify somebody from, from office if they violated it. That, that would be something that you could look at, but this system is built upon what you have now.
Which doesn't work, theoretically, it's why you're.
Well, what, what, what we didn't do is we didn't look at, we tried to keep it within the current system of enforcement, which is by taking a complaint to the Board of Ethics.
So let me ask this, so did we attempt to fix, within this bill, this new bill, are we, are we attempting to change anything to fix some of the concerns regarding enforcement or withdrawal? So therefore, what's in this bill, is it really just restating what's currently?
It's, it keeps in place the current system of enforcement, which is a complaint to the Board of Ethics.
So therefore, the purpose of this meeting is to try to clarify what's new, what's different. And so I think we should move on to continue to just, let's focus on that, if we have time, I think I'm glad to come back to this, and maybe we can give some recommendations that might result in amendments, you know, to this, with some of your recommendations possibly of the city attorney. But, so okay, let's, while we continue on for a little while, just giving clarification to some of the new things, the changes to the charter that this bill does. So Lindsey, if you could go on, please.
If you have the, so, if you go ahead and jump to the next slide, Chris, you go ahead and explain the formula with the mayor's race. Now, keep in mind that the 400,000 is an estimated number, that's not the exact number from the city. So, again, it's the same system. You're able to collect qualified contributions of anywhere from $5 to $100 from at least 1 percent of the registered voters in the entire city, which in this case, your magic sweet spot would be you're looking for 4,000 contributions. So the timeframe for this is going to start March 3rd and end on April 28th. You have a total of eight weeks to raise these qualified contributions. So say for example, you do again, the bare minimum to be a participating candidate, that would be $5, the lowest amount for, from at least 4,000 single contributors. So that minimum you would need to qualify would be your magic number right here, your $20,000. So as soon as you have raised that money, and you turn in the appropriate paperwork to the clerk, and the clerk certifies that, yes, these are, this is correct, then you unlock the initial distribution, which is $1 per registered voter in your district. In this case, it would be $400,000. Then, you would, with keeping this, you don't raise, say you don't raise any more than that $20,000, then you can get a match as well. So the match again is four to one, it's the same as the council. So the total payments made to the candidate from the city, on behalf of the city, by the clerk, cannot exceed your initial, two times the initial distribution. So you would be capped at $400,000 and another $400,000, so it would be $800,000 would be the most.
Counselor, I'm getting a little frustrated here. I think everybody understands the procedure and what we're looking at. What I need to know is where this scenario came from. Did this group make this scenario up? Did you look at another state? Because let me tell you the issue that I have, and I've done public finance and I haven't done public finance. So what this is creating, I've never known a city councillor to spend 80,000 or 90,000 on a race. And so, so I run for city council, and I don't want to do public finance. And so I go out and I raise $36,000. My opponent does public finance, and so he does the work he has to do, and immediately gets to 40,000, and he keeps working it. And so now, I have a public finance candidate who's got $80,000, and myself who's raised $36,000, because I don't want to go crazy with my, and then that puts me at an unfair advantage. So I don't understand this concept, and a mayor's race, so you're, you want people to run in a mayor's race, $900,000 in public financing or more, when some candidates have raised a million dollars, but you're forcing by this, this, you're forcing us to raise more money. And I don't, I don't think that was the intent of public financing. Now, I understand the issues with someone who doesn't do public finance and going out and raising maybe $90,000 and a public finance council can only raise 40, it puts them in a disadvantage, but you're switching it now. It doesn't work. You can't, because it's forcing everybody to raise more money.
Counselor, yeah, I believe, and those are, those are valid. I have the same, some, the same concerns, I think we all have some pretty strong opinions about this. And to be honest, I've read this over and over. And my, the biggest challenge that I had was just understanding what's different right now. And this is just a proposal. Now, as I was beginning to understand it, I had a lot, because I've used this twice, I mean, I've been through this process twice, I feel like I know it in and out. But then I got to this proposal, and it's extremely complex. I don't think it's complicated, but I do believe it's complex. And so the purpose of tonight was trying to take what's complex and try to give some clarity, at least help us to understand it. Now, I truly believe that at the end of this, we're all gonna have some really strong opinions about it. But the goal and I really, in this, I guess to answer the question, I'm tempted to do this, if anybody else wants to jump in, that's fine. I think my understanding is that the task force was given the responsibility of looking at some other options. And what, some of what this came from was some best practices from around the country, and a lot of this from some specific municipalities that are using this right here.
Can I finish, Mr. President? The point is, and I believe in public finance, I don't think it works the way it's worked, it works now, but it's gotta be fair, because I don't want to be a public finance. But it's got to be fair because of, I don't want to be a public finance, you're forcing me to do public finance. And, and I don't want to be forced, but I want it to be fair on both sides of the fence.
If I could just answer the question on where this came from. The task force initially heard a presentation from Common Cause. And this was a proposal that they, they put forth to deal with the question of matching funds. To substitute for, um, our unconstitutional system, a system of matching funds based upon small contributions. This system was, has been adopted, the testimony we got was in New York City and Los Angeles and several other communities. And you may recall which ones those are.
Uh, Seattle, Denver's working on whether to match a nine to one and Tucson has had one in place. And many of these have a great variance across the board. Some of these cities like Tucson, um, do not have an initial allowance at all. Actually, it starts out right out of the gates, uh, everybody having to earn five to one hundred dollar contributions to be matched, which would go more in line with what you're saying, thinking. Unfortunately, the way that we started out in two thousand and five here is we have an initial allowance because it's already part of this program. So that's where we started to work on that baseline. But the, the policies that they have in Santa Fe is actually the same. They're doing a two to one.
But, Mr. President, so the point is, and why don't you do something like, so if I'm the city council, I raise ninety thousand, they get the forty thousand, then you get to do the match up into what I, what I'm making. So then you keep getting to raise that four to one match to what the other candidates make, and then it would be fair.
Are you saying to have a match system based upon when a privately financed?
Well, what we tried to do in the old days that was not constitution. But so this way, so if I continue raising, if I'm a, not a public finance candidate, but I, I'm privately financed, so I raise six, so I, I go over the forty thousand that publicly financed candidates raised, and let's say I get ten thousand. Well, then that triggers the opportunity for the public finance to start to four to one, one to four match. No, under this new system.
Can I, uh, jump in? I just want to kind of, kind of support you, Mr. President. First of all, I agree with Councilor Winter, I don't think this is too much money. I think the council is going to have a problem with that. But what I'd like to suggest is that we just move on with the presentation. And here what, here the system, they turn it, we're gonna, I think there's, I think the councillors think that we have more than that money in the system right now. And that's why I mentioned the seven vote. I mean, if, in the, in the future, I think we can adjust in the future if we need more money. Because we'll be swamped, but right now, I think we're running it this, but anyway, I'd, I'd like to just move forward.
Yeah, and I think our, honestly, the reason why we're having this study session is that I think one of the biggest challenges, we had a committee meeting. Uh, we got this out of committee. It was very clear that within that committee meeting that the members of this council do not understand what's in this bill. And so I think, I think what we're dealing with tonight is, is let's, let's get a really good understanding of what's in this bill. We all are going to have strong opinions about it either way. I do. But I also, I, I have some, I also, the, the presentation that we have right here and these scenarios, one of the questions I, I have is if it's, if it's reflected in the bill. Again, I've read the bill several times and I'm not sure if it's entirely reflected actually in the bill. So there's a lot of work I think that needs to be done on this, done on this bill also. So, yeah, but let's, let's, I mean, Lindsay, if you, if you have a few more, you know, slides or if you feel like there's some things that are relevant. And then we'll jump right into some more discussion and ask some questions if you guys think that that's the best way to use this time, I think so.
So this is, again, in yellow, as we kind of touched on before, that's the only date that changed. The qualified, uh, period is now changed to end and coincide with the same due date for the petition signatures. This talks a little bit about the fund, which we've already covered. So there are this proposal, um, you'll see in the red line draft, or excuse me, in the clean copy draft you have before you. You also have these amendments that were recommended to you by the task force are included in that clean copy in, in bright color so that you can't miss them, so that that clean copy that you have has absolutely everything that the task force has recommended to you. And I believe that concludes the portion that relates to, uh, proposal one, um, as it relates to public financing.
Okay, I have a few questions for some pieces clarifying and we'll, we'll go from there. Counselor, if you have some questions and some discussion, I would ask that, you know, let's speak one at a time. And, um, if you, if you do feel the need to carry on some other conversations, aside from the, you know, the conversation that we're having, I mean, you're welcome to go outside and have the conversations outside. So just a few quick questions. This is a little more obviously relaxed and less formal than a full council meeting, but I want us to speak one at a time. So the, and just, just to clarify, so the, the qualifying contributions that are raised, let's say the first scenario of a council race. And I just want to clarify that, do, do all of the contributions, do they have to be within that councillor's council district or that candidate's council district? So, um, I'm getting one yes and one no. Okay, so all of the, all of the qualifying contributions can be raised by any registered voter within the city? Even if it's four, so District Five, um, I can go, that candidate can go to District Nine and raise and get five dollar qualifying contributions that would qualify, okay? Mr. Antonin?
Mr. President, I, I think that was not modified in the Common Cause suggestions. As I recall, the original system we have is five dollars from your district. But then, um, other dollars I believe were like seed money dollars and things like that, I believe it was within the city.
So right now, there's a little, in this proposal, it's a little bit unclear on, so you have, you have five, so you can raise ten dollars. I can get fifty dollars from one person, starting at the beginning when I begin to raise, when you begin to raise qualifying contributions. So my first fifty dollars that I raise, does it have to be from a person who's registered in my district? Or can I go get that first fifty dollars from somebody outside of this? Because right now, it is the five dollars is somebody within the district, but currently, you don't have the ability to be able to raise anything outside of that, that district. Mr. Antonin, you?
Your point is very good because my personal experience in these campaigns, having been involved in a few public monies campaigns. The seed money, which is very important to remember, um, was typically disassociated with the five dollar contribution. You didn't spend time looking at it and saying, okay, we'll put five dollars of your maximum one hundred toward the qualifying. Seed money was okay within the city. Five dollars within the district. And usually that's a discreet project that they came in and embarks on, go get the five dollars.
So right now, in the, and I, I want to, I guess we need to find out where that is in the actual bill, but.
It's, it's not covered.
The scenario is not, this is, this is interesting then because the scenario is that, that, that I can raise ten thousand dollars within the period, within the qualifying period. That there is an ability to raise ten thousand dollars, which is critical because if you're going to get to that eighty thousand dollars, you know, you have to get that ten thousand dollars within the period, within a, I think, a six week period, right? So the ten thousand dollars, um, does it have to be in, you know, I guess if it's with the current system and the, the, if there's no change, and that would mean I have to raise ten thousand dollars from registered voters within my district. Is that true?
Yes.
So the, the only pool for that, the eighty thousand dollars would be registered voters within a single council district. Is that, is that the case?
For the, Mr. President, if you turn to page six, section, you've got a different copy, section five, A, uh, one C. While you're, while you're an applicant and not a participatory candidate, you cannot become a participatory candidate unless you've got at least five dollars from one percent of the registered voters in the council district.
So do I only raise five dollars in?
No, it says at least five dollars. So you would be able to raise any, any, at least five dollars from one percent within your district in order to move from being, uh, a applicant candidate to a participatory.
Okay, so two thousand dollars. So, so in this scenario, two thousand dollars and I could raise it from five dollars to a hundred dollars from registered voters within my district. Okay, but I still have a time period to raise up to ten thousand dollars to qualify for the maximum amount, which would be eighty thousand dollars. So, and so on those, on that money, where, where do, where do we raise that money from? Where is that money raised from?
I think, those are the matching funds dollars.
Yeah, beyond the qualifying dollars, which is two thousand dollars.
That additional two thousand dollars, that would be based on nothing but five dollar contribution.
Not necessarily, because it seems like, um, there's an ability to raise anywhere from five to one hundred right off the bat.
Anywhere from five to one hundred.
That, that doesn't get you to the two thousand figure. That would put you over the two thousand, because you still have to get voters.
Well, it, the, the, the fact is, you, the raw number of voters you've got to get is the one percent in your district. And then you have to get from those voters anywhere from five to a hundred dollars. So you have to have, to use the example we've got here of a forty thousand percent district, you would have to get four hundred contributions.
On five dollars.
At, at a, at an, at anywhere.
This is the bare minimum.
At anywhere between five and a hundred dollars.
So, Mr. White, sorry to interrupt, but so you're saying that each of those minimum number that we have to have to qualify, they each have to verify that they have paid a minimum of five dollars?
Right.
Because you can't get twenty people to give you a hundred dollars each and then make up the difference. They each have to give at least five dollars.
All four hundred people have to give at least five hun, five dollars.
And so then you have your initial, you know, two thousand dollars or?
Forty more.
Yeah, or four thousand, say, right there. So from that point on, now, now you've qualified, but you still have a deadline. Still have a deadline, I believe, of what is that, June twenty period, where you still have certain petitions. And you can still raise up to ten thousand dollars to qualify for that maximum amount. So in that scenario, do you still have to raise, uh, those up to one hundred dollar contributions from your own district? And should that be clarified in the bill?
I think it should be clarified in the bill. I'm not, I'm looking for it right now and I'm, I think was what we were thinking, but I don't see.
And then to draw some.
I, I understand it's, no, it, I, I, it, let me look through here and see if I find it. I, I seem to recall it, but it's not, may not have made it here, that all of these contributions have to come within the district and the council.
Yeah, and I think.
I think that was the assumption that the task force had.
Yeah, that, that does need to be clarified either way. And then, then, once we, once we get some clarity on some of these things, we jump, I know like Councilor Winter, I do the same thing. We're jumping to, um, to conclusions that we have, I mean, valid conclusions. And my first glance at that is my first thought of that, and some, again, someone who's been through that and knows how extremely difficult it is to raise four hundred, five dollar qualifying contributions from people in your district. It, and again, just to stop right here and draw a conclusion, I mean, that is, man, that's a tough task. And I think we're trying to find the right balance between it should be hard, this should be a difficult thing, but yet we also want to be realistic also. Let me go to, uh, Counselor Gibson first and then.
Okay, so actually, I think it is in here, uh, section thirteen, matching funds. Clerk shall pay each participating candidate.
What page is that?
That's on page thirteen, line seventeen it starts. Clerk shall, or actually line eighteen, clerk shall pay to each participating candidate an amount equal to four times the amount of qualified contributions received or reported by the candidate pursuant to sections four and seven of this article. That takes you back to the definitions, the definitions for qualified contributions says it comes from your own district.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, I don't have very many neighborhoods where I would, uh, would do well with this.
Yeah, so that's, I think that does answer, I mean, so Counselor Winter, I mean, we're also, I mean, we're concerned about this, this massive amount of money that's, that's, um, you know, easily given out. And yet, there's some, I, I, as we really get right down to the details, it's pretty, pretty stringent there. I'm sorry, Counselor Gibson, go ahead.
So, I want, just want to make an observation here. First of all, I really appreciate, I know we've heard this before, but I really do appreciate all the work that's been done.
Been done, yes.
It also worries me a four times matching because I think that kind of defeats the purpose of, um, trying to keep the reins on hugely step, um, on, on, on elections. So that bothers me a little bit. But, but I'm wondering also, we get, if I'm a, a candidate who wants to be, uh, publicly financed, it looks like I don't get anything until after June twenty eighth. Well, there are several months before that that I would like to be, you know, maybe printing literature, you know? So does this take out, here, I've got a question, hold on, does this take out the?
Seed money.
The seed money?
It, it, it takes out the seed money. But what you are, what is available for you to spend is the money you are raising as qualified contrib, qualified contribution.
I have to say, I don't like that.
Here's what I understood it to be after reading everything and going through that is that, that, um, yes, before we collect those five dollars, a candidate collects that five dollars and that candidate, I know, I know you, that's the clerk's money. I mean, you, you don't perceive that in any way as, I got to get this into the clerk so I can, you know, so you can qualify that way. What I understand in this is that as you're raising that five to a hundred dollars, it's available for that candidate who's responsible for depositing it into account and, and can spend that right away. Now, now, Mr. White, though, does that also mean that, I also am familiar with the seed money. So there was a seed money process where you could raise money before the, the, the beginning of the time period when it starts. And so is that completely gone now?
The seed money is, is completely gone and it was, it was, what is in here now is the ability to use the qualifying contributions, uh, uh, and, and turn those into expenditures while you're in that period before, uh, June twenty eighth.
So technically, I mean, you could raise a good amount of money in day one, you know, and have money to spend right away, which is what that seed money would have done, so.
But that sounds like an accounting nightmare.
But, but I, I think again, it would be a system where, where it would be just keeping a list of your contributions in whatever size and then keeping a list of your expenditures and, which you have to do anyway.
So that, that's probably, when it gets to some like realistic and, and, and actual practical application, some of these changes, that's where, I mean, that's one point, which is probably one of about fifty that I think we really are going to need to think through. And, and I think it's going to take this, it's going to take this kind of discussion to do it.
So, and one other thing, when, when we accept checks, those checks are made out to open an ethical finance. They're not, they don't go to Diane Gibson and Stan Lewis.
Does the bill clarify that?
The, the, under, under this proposal, they would go to the candidate. And they would go to the candidate's account. You would have to put it into your candidate account. You would have to report it as an, as a, as a contribution. And then, um, any expenditures you think you would have to report as your expenditures.
Counselor Davis and then Counselor Carol.
To, to Counselor Gibson's point, I actually, I, I, I understand that frustration and the thing. I actually see this as an easier process, having worked on, we've all worked on other campaigns or volunteer, whatever. This seems to more align with a more traditional process to me, where we go out, we receive money, we report the money we receive and the person who gave it to us, just like we would any other, and that's available for the campaign to use from day one. So if you're successful in the first day or so, you are smart enough and you go out and find ten friends in your district who give you a hundred dollars right out of the gate, that's a thousand dollars you can use. When we get to June twenty eighth, you basically file your finance report and for every, the clerk will qualify every one of those in your district and then cut you a check. To me, this process seems much simpler than the one we're currently using, which is, as Counselor Lewis points out, is we collect all this money, there's two different pots of money. I'm asking you for seed money and for a five dollar. They're two different, they're written, literally written, the checks are written to two different accounts. They're deposited and accounted and held differently. I see this as a more simple process of, we're simply raising money in a more traditional way, filing the report and the clerk is matching the, the funds that are qualifiable as we go forward. So I think it's a, maybe I'm oversimplifying, but I think it makes more sense to me.
Uh, just, just a moment, Counselor, so Counselor Benton, then Counselor Jones. Just, just a moment, Counselor, so Counselor Benton, then Counselor Jones. Real quick, just to clarify, Counselor Davis, is the, the current bill, is the proposal, proposal, does it cancel the current seed money language in the charter right now?
It takes out the seed money provision, yes.
Okay, okay. I just want to clarify that. Counselor, Counselor Jones first, we'll prove, and then Counselor Benton.
So, I'm stepping, jumping ahead just a little bit. So now we've qualified, we've gotten the seed money, we've got all the money, the money has been matched, and the publicly financed candidates, candidates can now go out and raise money, public sector, from up to $100 per donor. Do those donors, must they be citizens and registered voters or whatever, in the city of Albuquerque? Can they be anywhere? Are there any restrictions at that point, since we're giving, the city is giving the money for most of the?
If you're in public financing, there would be a restriction if you're.
And what would that be?
It would be that you need to, once you become a qualified candidate, you need to remain a qualified candidate. And then if you violate any of the provisions, like, like accepting something that is outside your district or above $100, the clerk would have the ability to terminate you as a participating candidate. Now, Mr. Locer reminded me that it doesn't necessarily have to be an ethics complaint, that it can be a notice from the clerk saying, "Your report shows you've got a contribution over $100. You need to return it, or I'm going to disqualify you."
Okay, so specifically, do those contributions have to come from citizens, and do they have to be registered voters? Probably not. But must they come from people who reside within the district of the candidate?
If you're.
If you're qualified.
If you're particip-, if you're a participating candidate, participating in public financing, yes. If you're a private candidate.
Then come from any.
Didn't come from any.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Right.
To be specific on that one. So basically, you're saying the qualified candidate, all contributions must come from people who reside within their district?
Yes. And that's the way it reads it, doesn't, as Counselor Gibson pointed out, and I think from our discussion, there might be some clarifying language that could be put into the matching fund section and into the, into the bill to make sure that's the case. That's the way it currently reads, but you gotta read two sections together. And I don't like something in a charter that where you gotta read two things together to make it work. So I think that is one area that clarification needs to be done.
Counselor Benton, Counselor Harris, Counselor Gibson, let me make this a little bit more formal so that we could have a orderly discussion here. Counselor Benton?
So, so the seed money, as it stands now, is intended to give the campaign enough money to work through the qualifying period. So, it wasn't doing a bunch of mailers and things. It was getting your xeroxing of forms done and just basic, you know, whatever, buying donuts for volunteers, whatever, you know. It was for that effort, as I recall. So this sort of met, and I think, if I remember right, that was limited to $2,000.
For the 20,000.
Does that sound right?
For the 20, excuse me.
For, for the?
For the 20,000 voter population district. It's, it's.
Is it based on number of voters?
No, it goes, if I could.
What, the seed?
$1 per voter for the total contribution, okay?
And that was the maximum seed money?
No, 10% of that is the maximum seed money. $4,000, for a 40,000 registered voter district.
Okay, so that, so.
And then 10% of that, 400, for the qualifying contributions.
So you can, one person can give up to $400, and total, you can raise, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, actually, under the qualifying system, it's topped at 100, except the candidate.
No, 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 I meant currently, currently.
Currently, yes, we're talking currently.
The candidate can.
The candidate can give, I believe there's a limit on that, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Bottom line, currently, I think, you know, you can raise $1,000.
That's right.
And, but it is without that purpose, absolutely, to be able to get you through that period.
My point is, with this system, somewhere between $2,000 and $10,000 could be used for the same purpose when you're, you know.
Under the proposed.
Under this proposed scenario of 400 voters. And, and, okay, I, I just want to clarify that, that you've got to have some work with, however, would there be restrictions? Well, I guess there's no restrictions on how you would spend, you just have to show how you spend. Here's the only other question, Mr. President. Let's say you're going all the $5 contribution, depending on our district, you know, you're not going to get that many 100. All of those $5 contributions under this system would have to be reported the way we do now, which would mean you're reporting their employer, all of that stuff.
There is a provision in here that says you don't have to do that until it's 25 or more. So reporting the employer and all that would be for contribution.
For the $25.
Between 25 and 100.
So, yeah, that was interesting, reading that in here, that, I mean, it's going to require new forms, it's going to require more information than you get, you know, from people. So it's interesting, but yeah, it's definitely clarification. Counselor Harris?
Just sort of a comment, I, that I think what happened is that Common Cause, because I've spoken with them, I remember Common Cause, kind of looked at this as an opportunity to get this sort of model ordinance done someplace. But really, I think part of the problem is that counselors, at least in the council district, we thought it was working. So they rewritten something that wasn't working. And, and I think that's why there's a lot of resistance. And, you know, I'd rather see sort of more of a surgical thing, like go back and, if you want to fix that Supreme Court case problem, then you give us another half again. And then I think the problem that we foresee, is the mayor's race, that there's not enough time. In the council district, I don't like this, I think there is enough time, and I think there isn't enough money. So, and so I think that that's why there's some, and also personally, I like having, when, you know, just with ethical problems, and I had this thing that I had to go through where there was a forensic audit of my account by, because the mayor controlled everything at that point. Anyway, so, you know, I all believe in, in public finance. One of the reasons is I report one contribution, count that, one. How much trouble can I get in? And the city is the one who can do it, except for the seed money, then, yeah, I also did do some of that. I mean, I, I don't think this is something, I, I like the idea of you report one contribution, remember you forgot to.
I got a date for $100.
Yeah, yeah, be good you didn't. You're like, well, everyone knows, you get nothing, check the city.
Okay. Counselor Gibson?
So, couple of notes that I, I made before, that personally, I'd like to see a date field on the forms for the qualifying contributions. And, you know, past races, I, I agree with Counselor Harris, that past races, since we've had public financing, I believe, people who have really wanted to qualify for public financing have been able to do it. It's, and I know I'm going to be kicking myself next May, but, but it's, it's, it's a lot of work, but we got it done, and it's left over. So I really would agree that probably what we're using now for council races has been working okay. I would like to see more money and more time for mayors. And, last thing I want to mention is that, again, with, with the lack of seed money, and, and we're, we can't start collecting contributions until May 17. That means there's no money to work with until May 17. So I think that's a problem. I think that's a problem. I, I just, and I really don't like the idea of putting money that we've collected from public financing in a private account. I think that it needs to go through a step before, before it's forwarded back to its, its money. So, anyway, that's it.
Okay. I would like to ask Mr. Locer in the city attorney's office, I mean, I just want to give you an opportunity to weigh in. I mean, have you, have you followed the task force meetings, and have you, how, how familiar are you with this, the bill as it stands right now? And do you see, from a legal standpoint, do you see it, do you see any red flags? Do you see any issues, or see anything to work through?
No, the main change in paradigm, if you will, is that the old system was that if your opponent raised more money than you did, the public financing kicked in and matched that. That's been found to be entirely unconstitutional by the Supreme Court. So the new system is based on your own campaigning, rewarding that, if you will, in matching. So you have the initial distribution. The way it is now, because of the matching, the opposing matching funds are not available anymore, there's just an initial distribution since that court ruling. So it's really a matter of policy, how you match, like, one to one, two to one, you know, nine to one after the distribution. That's really kind of up to you all, but I don't think that, you know, I don't see the constitutional problems.
Counselor Sanchez?
Thank you. I am extremely concerned with the four to one match, and also the issue regarding sending this to the voters with the amendment. It's going to be a charter amendment, and I think if, if it's complicated, and if it's a four to one match, I think it's going to be very difficult to sell voters of this community. And that's a lot of money that's going to be coming from the taxpayers to fund campaigns. That's my biggest concern. I just think that if we can keep it, and it's not going to be simplistic, but try to keep it as understanding as possible to the voters when they vote in these charter amendments, where it can be realistic and they can look at these numbers, where it's, you know, not, you know, four to one match, and you've got four candidates running for mayor, that's, you know, $4 million, close to $4 million. And I think that's going to scare a lot of voters away. But at the same time, I think it does break some equity in some of these races. We don't have the problems, I think, in the council races. I think the biggest disparity is in the mayoral race, and we saw that in this last election, where Mayor Berry, you know, raised close to $900,000, and Pete Donelli, I think, had $382,000. That's where I think the major problem is at, is in the, in the mayor's race, not so much the council races. Although we have districts like Counselor Pena's district, where you've got a smaller number of people in that district that are registered, that number has increased, but in her case, she couldn't take public financing because of the difficulty in trying to run camp, run a campaign with 24, 25,000 dollars.
Okay, then Counselor Jones, then Counselor Davis.
Let's beat this horse as dead as it might be. Let's go back to how we get the contributions. Once we've gotten our contributions, now the publicly financed candidate can go back out and compete with the private financed candidate to raise more money. However, what you said about the finances received by that qualified candidate must be from registered voters or voters who live within the district. So, isn't there a constitutional issue here if they receive money from a business? Is it the business that has to reside within the district, or is it the owner of the, of the business, or how do we, businesses like to give money to campaigns? How do we, how do we wash that one down? I think we have a bit of a court conundrum here, because I can't imagine this would possibly go on campus.
Under the current and proposed, I don't believe we have, we allow businesses.
I believe that's illegal.
So that it's, it's dealt with under the current?
Yeah, I, I think right now, person in here is defined as including businesses.
And how do you, how do you define where they are? Do you define it's where the business is located? Some of these districts don't have businesses.
Is that, is that, is that the case right now, currently? Currently, can businesses give to, to council campaigns as qualified, contribute to a city council, or?
Let, let me, I can clarify that. It's, because it's based on, you have to be a registered voter in order to, to, to be a qualified contribution.
So you're saying that every future contribution from the publicly financed that now goes out and raises more money later, it can only be from a private individual who is registered in that district?
Registered voter.
Are we now not eliminating businesses from participating in this election?
No, because, yeah, the candidate can choose.
But only if they're qualified.
Yeah, the candidate, public financing generally is allowed to have these sort of criteria on them. And then the, the free speeches is, issue is addressed, because you can either elect to be a participating candidate, or elect to rely on private contributions. So the candidates do have their choice on which route to go.
That's a good question, though. It is, because if you're not in that system, you can take contributions from businesses.
Right.
Correct. And again, that's something that I, I'm not experienced at, other candidates have experienced that, so. Good use that. Counselor Davis, do you?
Yeah, and I suspect philosophically, my friend from the height tonight are going to just disagree on this in general, but I think the point, I mean, what I understand is, is I, and Counselor Winter, to your earlier point, I think, is my understanding, you're reading the original ordinance in the way, or the original charter piece in the way, is that the council set a preference for, for public financing in that it created an accountability to voters, and eliminated some of the perceived conflicts of interest that have come from, not necessarily anybody at this table or anything in our elections, but just this national sort of sense that people's votes sort of have been fleshed out or have been minimized by outside influence. So, I, I mean, to some degree, I think businesses are excluded from our elections because they're not able to register to vote. And so we've made a distinction about who is and who is not responsible for that. So I don't have an issue with that piece. And if someone wanted to choose to go the, the private route and raise more of that money, I think that's okay. To Counselor Jones' point earlier, staff put together something, I think, that I've seen around, and it's here now, that 93% of the dollars that were raised in the last few elections came from people, people and businesses giving more than $100. So I think there is a lot of sort of larger contributions already in the system that I think a solid public financing proposal would do. I would entertain, and I agree with you, I think the four to one sort of makes it hard to sell and to stomach, and so I, I would entertain an idea of capping it, you know, you know, some kind of, leaving it about where it is, because to Counselor somebody's point a minute ago, I, I hear the, Counselor Winter, I hear the thing of the private finance candidate. I think right now, the concern of the public finance candidate is this, is at a disadvantage, because they are capped, period. And a private candidate can continue to raise. This eliminates that. If there's a distribution that gets them up to an equitable point, and then both candidates can continue to raise money, now one up to five, under this system, 500 or $5,000 at a time, the other, it'll only $100 at a time. But I do see that as a little more equitable, if it really becomes hot and embedded, that it might interest that. So, I, I entertain the idea. I think the four to one is a lot in the council race, maybe not in the mayor's race, because it's a big city, and we're going to have that separate, but maybe we ought to have this conversation, Mr. President, sort of, I suggest perhaps as council and that mayor in a separate place, because I think there are different issues and different questions.
Yeah, that's why you're.
I, I just wanted to say, one, the task, remember, our task force was, was very divided on this. It's probably one of our closest folks, was a nine to five vote. But a lot of the testimony we heard, and I want to expand a little bit on, on what Counselor Davis had said. So we struggled with a lot, our members had a lot of the issues that you all have. But a lot of the testimony that we heard, that, that you all haven't heard yet, was along the lines of, actually, the value of, of keeping it this way was to change a system to one where you encourage people to participate in public financing, so that the system you create is one that says, yes, we are going to favor people in public financing. And we want people to be in public financing, because what the courts have identified is the problem, and that government can address, is that there is either a real or perceived perception that large contributions create a perception of, of corruption. And that's why government is allowed to do some of the things that we are allowed, the government is allowed to do. And so what this system does, and I think it does deliberately, is create a system that would be such that everybody would want to participate in public financing. And that would, that it would, that it does have a money, money advantage to participate in public financing, because then you're not, that if you're getting a contribution between $5 and $10, you're not beholden to those people as you might be for contributions of, of 500 or $1,000. That's the sort of testimony we got, and I think probably some of the things that, when this is back before the council, that you might be. this is back before the council that you might be hearing and when the bills are being consulted.
Mr. Antune, I think.
Just, Mr. President, to follow up on Mr. White's comments, the discussion in the task force definitely reflected two centers of gravity. Interestingly, it wasn't that there was a side that was in favor of unlimited contributions and unlimited levels, and a side that was against the big bad companies, you know, it was just to try and accommodate an evolving state of affairs. Counselor Harris, you know, made mention, I think, early on in the whole public financing debate, that the Arizona case was going to conflict with where we were. Sure enough, it completely cut the legs out under our matching funds system. Common Cause came into the task force and being a national organization has gauged a number of cities and areas to see what might be working. But the point is, it's just starting. This thing continues to evolve. And interestingly, even in our meeting on the other day with Counsel Gibson, Counsel Harris, I can speak as one task force member, it's even evolving in my mind. I worked very closely with Common Cause in trying to understand their proposals and then to modify it to something that might be workable. Since then, and I'm going to go off the reservation here, I think we're looking at an over-medicated system. We've tried very hard to fix it to the point where in the attempts to make it workable, it's overly complicated. And we want to remember that the goal was to provide additional funds to help a publicly financed candidate maintain a viable campaign in exchange for giving him going out or her going out and getting large contributions and tempting the odds of undue influence. In exchange, there was going to be playing around with the First Amendment, if you will. And the belief was, we were coming up with a public policy that would justify touching upon the First Amendment in an attempt to keep elections clean. I think what has happened is it's reached a point, like Counselor Sanchez said, where this will probably never get approved, just gauging the electorate. The other day, a thought was, was put on the table, why don't we stick with the current system and perhaps adjust the percentages of the amount going to the candidate and keep it as simple as that? In fact, I'm not even sure to what extent that might even require a charter change, but even if it did, I think it would be a lot easier to sell. For example, instead of $1 per voter, depending upon the fund, which I know we might have some finance people here that were brought in to help advise this, this is part of the discussion, depending upon the fund, we now only give money to, at levels that the fund can afford. And then we pro rata, reduce it across the board so that, you know, that which we have, we give, but no more than that. We can get a pretty good estimate of what kind of, what the fund's going to look like in the various election years. The mayor's year, you've got five counselors and a mayor. The off-year, you've got four counselors. Adjust the percentage to that and then continue the adjustment. Instead of 10%, so you go to one and a half, they're going to get one and a half dollars, then the seed money would go to, instead of 10% of that, 15%. And likewise, they'd have to go out and get half as many $5 contributions to qualify for the additional money. That would help raise funds to offset the overall total that would be given. The point being, it would simplify it. And I think it might be a good idea to shift the conversation to something more workable like that, rather than trying massage, I think, an overly massaged system already.
So just a point of clarification, and just a, we do have a bill, I mean, this is a bill that is, has been moved, it's introduced, it's before the council right now, it's going to be up for final action in our next council meeting. So obviously, and this is also Counsel Harrison's bill, so any, any kind of, you know, I guess, motion or deferral or anything like that would come at the, at Counsel Harrison's wishes there, would he like to do. But I would say, there's also, there is a time limit on this bill also, because it does recommend this coming, this next election, this next year, this would be before. And so a couple of suggestions I have would be maybe to still, still look at this timeline, let's look at a, let's look at a deadline, and there's only so long that this bill could be deferred. But maybe we look at that as a timeline, and we say, maybe we know it could be deferred another month, another two months, and still possibly make that timeline. Another, and one, maybe one recommendation would be that the current bill is stands. A clean copy has not been approved yet, by the way. So if you were just to read that red line copy, I would challenge you to, if you were to read that, to explain to me what it means, but, or really to be able to really decipher some of these things. So one of the things I would suggest, and maybe we can get some other advice from this too, is would be, or Counsel Harrison, would be to, if this bill were, I don't know what the best pathway would be, if it were withdrawn and then reintroduced with the current amendments on it, along with the amendments that haven't been introduced, with the committee substituted amendments, if there's still time for it to be reintroduced with what we've talked about tonight, maybe addressing some things, ensuring that addresses things we've talked about tonight, and all the changes on it so that we can reintroduce a clean copy. And then, would we still have time to give it the proper, you know, discussions that we all probably need to have, you know, addressing these questions? So that's, that's one idea. We're kind of laying out some different possibilities here of a, of a timeline or a direction of how we go with this. Counsel Harrison.
One thing, because I think that, I think one of the people on the task force recognize that maybe this is a little complex, and to my mind, maybe just bump a little bit more money into public financing for counselors, maybe a little more money into, maybe have a minimum of 30,000 or 35,000, you know, so maybe in a district that has a certain underrepresented voters and, and I don't know if I actually agree with Counsel Pena, but I'm willing to say, okay, that's a reasonable enough thing. Maybe we'll have a minimum amount for small district votes. Maybe have a matching for council districts to, I mean, just kind of look at a surgical fix to the council. I don't think the timeline really needs to be expanded for council. But I think that most counselors recognize that, that you need more time, you need more money for mayor. And maybe if we could like have like a small kind of sub-task force, just kind of look at this and come back with maybe some stripped down kind of amendments that do less. And I really think that maybe also having a charter amendment that allows us to amend this with seven votes, so that you can fix your, the common cause is concerned, that well, you have to put enough money in here so that when the city gets bigger and, you know, and I think I met with Matt, said, well, $90,000 might seem like a lot now, but it's not going to seem like a lot in the decade, trust me. He's like, well, then let's have it so we can amend it with seven votes and then when it gets up. But right now, it's just kind of shocking to council, like, oh my God.
We'll go to Counsel, I'm sorry.
So anyway, yeah, so I'm talking too much, but maybe we can have something where we kind of go to like a little subcommittee, have a look at some, maybe some simpler ways of handling this. And look at the big things, I think Common Cause and I think people on council think that, you know, you just can't be an ordinary Joe and run for mayor. You have to have a significant organizational backing, else it's not going to get, going to get.
If we go that direction, and I'm not opposed, but I think that's a drastic change from this bill right here, so probably withdraw this bill and starting over in a lot of ways. But Counsel Pena and then Counsel Gibson.
Thank you. You know, looking at it, I just really want to thank Counsel Winter for his comments and Counsel Statious and obviously Counsel Harris. I think that it's really complex. I think that the voters looking at this and trying to understand it, we're having a difficult time trying to understand this, you know, I'm sure others out in the community are going to as well. And one of the issues that I was going to address was to talk about the disparity. So one of the things in terms of the city council and the mayoral race, I think we do have to dissect them separately, because with the city council race, one of the issues that wasn't addressed with this, it didn't benefit my district, either way, whether you went public financing or public financing, because, because of the disparity, because of the disparity in the amount of financing that we get, we actually, you know, you really can't run a campaign on $23,000. It's just really difficult to be, if you know how much a mail piece costs for your district, you can only target, just basically, the targeted voters. And you really want to be able to expand your reach and inform the community of what you're trying to do. So there's really a challenge, and I thought that was really unfortunate when I was running. And so, anyway, so that actually forced me to run, to run privately financed. And I really hated to do that, just based on my, you know, my philosophical views, I hated to do that, but it really forced me into that. But then when you look at this, and this is just for clarity, and I know it doesn't sound like we're going this direction anymore anyway, but as to Counsel Winter's point, is that, so if you're at, let's say you're at the max for my district, you're at the max of $40,000, and you're saying that if somebody who's privately financed would then be able to, if they raised more money, at that point, we're tapped out at the city, for city funding, but we can continue to raise money at the amount of $100 per person. So it still puts us in that competitive pace as to where the privately funded person could raise $1,000 for every $100 that we were over there busting our butts trying to get. So it really puts the publicly financed person at a disadvantage with lots more money. And in communities that are economically disadvantaged like mine and people who actually want to run from the community, it really puts them at a disadvantage because, you know, to raise that kind of money to be competitive in a race is just, I think it would hurt communities like mine. So just want to make that comment, even though I think we're kind of changing the direction a little bit, and I would support what you're saying.
And I think we need to withdraw the bill, Mr. President, sorry, and I think just do our substitute.
Yeah, it's quite a change. I think what you all were talking about is quite a change. This is a pretty specific bill that I still don't think we completely understand, you know, how it's written, or if the proposal is actually written into this bill the way it should be. And so I think if we veer from this, then it's a drastic enough change that it probably needs to be withdrawn. But that's just my opinion, and maybe something else that we need to do.
I think we need to withdraw it, I think let's keep doing what we're doing.
I guess it just seemed to me like what we were saying as well, what Mr. Antune was saying was just such a, it was just such a departure, I think, from where this bill is headed, you know, but.
Just substitute it, just keep working.
Okay, yeah, maybe Counsel Gibson and then Counsel Pena, or Counsel Jones.
So I just want to.
We can come back.
Also agree with Counsel Harris' suggestions, but one addition, I really think it's a great idea that we're able to accept more than $5 towards the vote. So I would say, you know, anything $5 or over, $5 to $100, you know, whatever that number is, but that would really help in, you know, not being able to make change, for one thing. And I've had, certainly had people who wanted to give you more, so that would be the other suggestion I would have.
Okay, Counsel Jones.
Thank you. Okay, let's go back to, let's go back to the money that can be publicly financed person, let's go back to mayoral, because that's what we seem to be zeroing in on. So now, what are the qualifications to remain a qualified, what has to happen to become, remain a qualified candidate in a mayoral election? Who can contribute to the mayoral election and not harm the qualified status?
Registered voters within the municipal.
So what does that do to businesses?
That means if you elect public financing under this proposal, you could not accept a contribution from a business.
And do you truly think that that would stand up in a court?
I think under the current state of the law, I think the other systems limit their, their contributions, qualifying contributions to registered voters. I, I don't want to say certainly, but it's certainly maybe something Mr. Looker could take a look at to make sure.
And, and, you know, stop, so that, I'm just thinking about disenfranchising voters. So if they've not been allowed to participate in the, in the process by contributing to a mayoral candidate, but then just before the election, I mean, does it, does it cause people to not want to register to vote, or does it cause people to want to register to vote and vote? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but I think, I think that's a, something that needs to be looked at with that suggestion.
Counsel Davis, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
This is about 10 minutes ago when you asked to speak, but I may have missed Counsel Sanchez, so if you'd like to go back to that.
I've been waiting for a while. Real quickly, one of the things that we need to do is we need to talk to the Burnley County Commissioners about this, because if it's going to go on the ballot this November, we need their approval. The last time there was a, there were three different charter amendments, and we were going to try to get on the ballot, not a single one got on. And now we have to have the full text based on what the voters decided. So, I mean, we're not going to be able to get three bills on this election. If we can get one, we will be lucky. But I think it's important we talk to the county commissioners now, that we may be looking at a bill, one, at least one of these bills move forward, so the voters in this general election have an opportunity to vote on this charter amendment.
Yeah, that's a good point. And this is, I mean, I think we're all very emotional about this because we're all invested in this in a lot of ways. And I, I'm, you know, personally not pushing this board in any way, I just want to understand it, I want us to understand it. In fact, I'm surprised that this passed in the first place years ago. I can't believe that, you know, something like this actually passed and was actually in place right now or something similar, so because of, you know, just because of the nature of it. Counsel Davis.
I appreciate that. Yeah, and I hear that concern, I mean, I don't, I don't think excluding businesses from the, again, I go back to that with respect to Counsel Jones, but I don't think excluding businesses from the process disenfranchises any voters. Nothing has ever stopped businesses from expressing their intent and doing like any other business or organization does, to encourage voter, to express their opinion, encourage voters to take a position, and we have a process for that in the PAC. So I think that's a, I mean, I don't, again, I go back to that, I don't, I don't have an issue sort of with that. I had another point, and I lost it in all this.
I think I was waiting.
That is probably, yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, oh, so here, my other point is, and I realize we're talking about a lot of money relative to what we have now, but I want to be sure we're having the right conversation, we're not saying, well, metal runner council race, 20,000 wasn't enough, 40,000 was just fine. But I think we're also talking about in a system where we have 8% and 12% voter turnout. And with $40,000 in my district, having run a few campaigns on all kinds of sides, that was enough to target the people who always vote in these elections, the way professionally the law may should be done. And it wasn't enough, quite frankly, for me to do the outreach I wanted to do in the international district, where voters are fewer and far between and more transient, and I have to do a little more to track them down. And so I, it's not, none of our districts are analogous, but it is a lot like some of the conversations my friend from the southwest side of town has been talking about. So I'm hesitant to say, well, let's just put a cap and say 40,000 is enough. I'm encouraged by the fact that we create a system that gives everybody the ability to really have a robust election and do some creative things that are involved, get voters to turn out. I don't have a problem with us, with this doing, if we can afford it under the current funding that we have, without busting our budget, so to speak, which it is seems by the spreadsheets we can. I'm sort of encouraged by the idea that we might create a system that encourages candidates who aren't entrenched or aren't here or aren't easily able to collect, again, no disrespect, disrespect, but who aren't able to go to a couple of forums and aren't able to go to the NIA forum and collect $4,000 or $5,000 from a handful of people at one table, and have that undo all the work that might need to be done in the international district from the southwest side. So I like the idea that we're putting more money into the system through a responsible process that involves just voters to be able to do that. So I want to go back to a little bit of the premise where we started and say, I'm not so opposed to the idea that we've created a system that puts a little more money in our elections to be sure we have the resources to talk to people and encourages candidates to invest in a system that prioritizes talking to voters instead of talking to PACs and special interests who also have an interest in the city but may not have an interest of our districts in part, so.
Counsel Gibson, unless I miss Counsel Sanchez.
I have a different.
Okay.
Surprise, surprise. So, and I have neighborhoods too, several neighborhoods that, you know, probably voter turnout is slim and none. I would not. I would not, you could give me another $10,000 towards those neighborhoods. I still can't do a mailing to them, I can't do a phone call to them. The way you get to those people is knocking doors, which costs zero money. The other thing is, is that by that time, you know, really, to increase voter turnout is, or participation, even not just voter turnout, but to increase participation comes with registration, you know. So that's early on, you don't have to be a candidate to do that. There are a lot of very good initiatives in the city of Albuquerque around that. So I don't see that giving more money to a campaign is going to reach out to people who, you know, either don't, haven't voted in recent elections, or not even registered to vote. It's not gonna make a difference. But I did walk those neighborhoods more than once, more than twice.
Okay. Counsel Harris, or Ms. Ferguson, I don't wanna, or let's do this. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time keeping track of this. But Counsel Penney, if you were the one next, then go ahead, please.
Okay. I actually wanted to, Counsel Davis, I agree. I think us being able to have the ability to get the message out, because when you're just focused on your targeted voters, you're really kind of, you know, not connecting with the entire community. And yes, you're right, Counsel Gibson, and pounding the pavement is the number way to actually do that. But really, when you wanna try to do more creative things, like voter registration and outreach like that, and really being able to get the message to the community, to kind of congregate somewhere so that they can do some of those efforts, I really think that that really needs to be looked at. Because with the, like I said, in this, in the district that I represent, $23,000, you just really can't do much. And then I just actually had a comment for, or question for one of the city attorneys in terms of the business contributions. Wasn't there something, okay, okay. Because I thought, and I'm just kind of, sorry, because I know that when I was running the campaign, I was doing privately funded campaign, is that you couldn't accept any business contributions. And then there was something about a ruling coming out. And then after, kind of immediately after the campaign had ended, there was a ruling that said that you could receive business contributions. Not saying that I'm supporting, but it's kind of for clarity purposes.
Yes, there was a federal court ruling that did allow, that found that the city's restriction against business or corporate contributions was unconstitutional. So they are allowed in campaigns. So that is something that, you know, the city clerk's office, they count as a recognized and we put that in the up on the website. In private campaigns, correct. Because obviously businesses can register to vote.
And then, Mr. Ferguson. So then that goes back to my argument, that if we did this scenario, and you had $80,000, and the privately funded person had $80,000, they could actually, it just creates this whole vast amount of money that has to be raised, because the privately funded campaign could actually get a $5,000 tax, or whatever the case may be, and we're limited by the $100 increments, or five to $100 increment after that, correct?
Actually, the business ends in the individual contributions, for example, where they set by the last election, it's a percentage of the salary. So there is a limit for the individual and business.
But it doesn't mesh with the publicly financed.
Correct.
Okay.
It is significantly more.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think Counsel Harris, Ms. Ferguson.
Two things. I think we have someone for the clerk's office. I've heard that you put all of these, 'cause I talked to Counsel Davis, who suggested maybe we use the mail-in, which might, especially when you get this done by the next mayor's election. In terms of what is the cost of that versus the cost of putting these bills on the county ballot, how much would they charge us to do that? Would that charge us what?
They don't charge us much. The question's, can you get on?
But I think they do charge us for the additional something, something. But they've charged us a lot more. How much, do we have any idea how much they charge for?
Yeah, Mr. Samson, just the timeline and ballot, or even...
Yeah, Counselor, in the past, they've charged this a nominal amount just for setup. I think in this case, though, because of, because of how the voters rejected the proposal to, you know, publish by title and, you know, we're looking at 36 pages on probably an already crowded general ballot. I don't have a cost for that, but it probably would be prohibitive, as well as attractive.
Well, what we're limited with on ballots under state law is that there must be one paper ballot. And right now, I believe it's eight by 19 inches is the biggest ballot that you can print. So it's a physical, it's a physical limitation. And also, you know, obviously the print can't be too small, because it has to be readable. So it's literally a physical limitation.
I think we have to the discretion of the city attorney on whether we could summarize, this could be summarized about. It is, it is a call from the city attorney, you know, correct? And also, there's a, there could be another option of mail-in election for something like this that might summarize, and so we do have some options there to look at. We do have, this mini was planned till 7 o'clock. We'll go beyond that, we discussed this for a little bit longer. I do have item A that we missed, and that we need to make, take a vote on. So item A is approval of the study session summary minutes from January 14, 2016. I have approval. Motion to say for approval, if they would say yes.
Yes.
Those votes though, and that passes, and so we'll continue, we have a few more minutes. If anybody else had any other comments. I believe, and Counsel Harris, with the last word, you sponsored this bill, and I'm assuming that we're gonna defer these anyways, but how much would it cost to do a mail-in election? Can we take the money out of a fund for this? This is a law...
The mail-in election.
Does he declare this ready?
Oh.
I believe we can do a mail-in election. It would follow like an absentee voting process, and we could do that. I don't know the cost offhand.
In terms of the cost, I mean, it's gonna be roughly $700,000, $800,000.
We have, we'd have to mail it to every registered voter in the city.
If you're talking about, you're talking about first-class mail out and first-class mail in for 300,000 plus voters, plus the cost of the ballot, plus the cost of the additional material. And so it's probably gonna be $700,000, $800,000.
So special election would be about the same. And can we, if we're, so we use the money as a fund for this?
I'm not quite sure about the appropriations, but it's just a matter of expense, that it's $700,000, $800,000. The last thing was that, if we're one issue, we could, as a mail-in ballot, just find the difference.
Oh, we can't use the...
Voting here.
Fund, but after... Counsel Sanchez.
The voters, remember this, the voters just recently passed a bill with a petition drive, so we could try to stop the special election, so that could become problematic. We as a city are pushing the special election, and the voters said we'd like to stop the cost of these special elections.
So meaning that we, does it eliminate the, or basically just recommends that we...
There's still a way on the council to put it on the ballot for the special election.
Maybe, Mr. President, just to move this along, I think we're, it is an important question. I think we're putting a cart before the horse, because at this point, we don't even have a thing to ask ourselves, much less voters. I think I'd rather us get to a place that we have something we think is necessary, and then decide if we really think it absolutely has to be done before the mayor's race. I have a strong preference that we get this in place before there, if we can do it, because I'd like to see a viable race on both sides, but whatever. I think I'd rather see us create the thing that we think is right, and then decide how we get it to where it needs to be.
Okay. Well, it sounds like that at least this bill will be, you know, deferred. It's up for final action at the next council meeting. I'm sure it'll be deferred by Counsel Harris. That's his discretion, and then work with Counsel Harrison. If y'all would like to, I mean, we'll schedule another study session and come back with other recommendations based on what we talked about tonight. Anybody else? Or adjourn?
Slow. No, no, we're right on this one.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate it.